Can you use that alternative?
Yeah, that's right. I've been signing everything as a condor, you know, because it sounds pretty cool, doesn't it?
Well, I've sent about a hundred emails today.
Ah, I think I got ninety-nine.
Wow, jeez.
I can't choose.
You knew where they were going, right?
You know, if you'd like, I can put a filter in that, so just delete those if you'd like, you know?
I start blocking. Straight to spam.
They actually made some headwinds on something, so.
Yes. You can't, there's a block of walls. No, I kept getting copies of them, but what's he talking about? I have no clue.
Is that you? Is that something different?
I was at the doctor's office, that's all. I was at, I was at the doctor's office and, and, and certain things.
There's another third, is that you?
Yeah, no, that's not me. I have, I have certainly worked with it. I gotta have, uh.
Tony?
I don't like that.
It's a little late for you.
Please leave some benefits for the rest of us.
No, no, I didn't, you don't have any. That's, you know, I'm thinking about like all that Medicare, that's the stuff that I've paid for for years.
Getting bankrupted.
Get it back. Leaving any from the rest of us. The point. Bears after you. Faster than you. He gets on TikTok because he has no speaking mode. So what he does is he sits down on the keyboard and sends us all this written stuff. The benefits of coffee. Wow, he must have been appalled the other day.
I assume the doctor's reading.
Read that message on Saturday?
Did you read that? I hope you learned something, Mark. You know, it's fancy. That's legal stuff there. Sir? I don't know.
I grabbed a pencil.
You use the fancy one, I'll use, I'll use the crafty.
This meeting is being recorded.
Oh, I've got the memo.
It is a green.
No.
Do you like a green?
I grabbed that and thought it was a pen. Got seven thirty, we've got a call to order, pledge allegiance.
The nations of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as all.
Mr. Prano.
Here.
Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Thorne.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Nimitz.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. President. Okay, we've got all six trustees present, either in person or high remote. We have a quorum, we have a meeting. According to the governor's gubernatorial proclamation of the pandemic, we are once more allowed to continue remote meetings until the second of April. What he does definitely. His current proclamation will go for another twenty-eight days. April the second, I believe, is the date I noticed on it. So, because we do have two members of the board, uh, remote, all men, all votes will be by roll call. So, just that's established. Uh, next item on the agenda is the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two?
So move Deatley.
Second, Thorn.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Thorn to approve the minutes of February sec- twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Any corrections? There are no corrections, roll call please. Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion, so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, president's report. Village Hall's open. Thought I'd let you know, in case anybody needed. Catch up. Uh, other than that, proclamation's been re-signed till April second. Uh, I don't have anything else, so we'll go to the court's report. Uh, I have nothing to report tonight, uh, Mr. President. Tony, uh, planning and zoning. We, uh, had a request from the P and Z that they would like to arrange a regular scheduled meeting for the second Monday of each month. Currently, they've been on on-call type of basis. Uh, but we do have a couple of two or three things that are in the works and they've decided that they needed to have a regular schedule. Uh, so what they have done is asked that, uh, they be on the calendar for the second Monday of each month going forward. So, we have any issues with that at all? Not, uh, let's have a, uh, motion to approve the P and Z meeting on the second Monday of each month going forward.
So moved.
Second, Prano.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Prano to authorize the P and Z commission to meet on the second month, or second Monday of each month. Any further comments or questions, discussion? If not, roll call please. Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, so passes. Okay, uh, the next item with the P and Z was the approval of resolution five forty-four, establishing the official name of Illinois Route seventy-two in the village of Sleepy Hollow. Establishing official addresses. Which we might, if you have any electronic.
Don't, don't do like that guy here, Daniel.
That'll be, uh, like this.
One dollar.
Yeah. One dollar free drink.
I say we raise it to ten.
I said it.
And it has to be paid cash. No, I can't do that. Okay, we're back to, uh, resolution five forty-five, establishing the, uh, official addresses along Route seventy-two. This issue started about twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three years ago. Uh, when we started our little commercial strip along seventy-two and people said, we don't want to just have a Route seventy-two address, couldn't we have something different? Well, West Dundee and East Dundee had called Route seventy-two or Higgins Main Street. So, we went along with it. However, somewhere down the line, the assessor's office didn't get it, the post office didn't get it. Nobody seems to have gotten all of them, they've gotten some of them. Uh, so what Ms. Detmer has done is gotten all the ones that we're aware of that have not been picked up. And so that is the list that you see in the packet this evening. All those addresses should be ten oh one, West Main Street, not ten oh one Higgins or ten oh one Route seventy-two or, uh, three thirty-five West, whatever. You know, they should be West Main Street, so. I'll tell you a little bit of history on that. My recommendation was ignored. I thought we should name Route seventy-two the Floyd Follies Freeway. You can take it from there. Anyway, back to five forty-four, we have a motion to soul proof.
So move Prano.
Second. Second, Hardy.
Uh, move, first motion by Prano and was seconded by Hoffman and Hardy at the same time. Uh, we got any corrections or questions on resolution five forty-four? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, so pass. Okay, nothing else for the planning and zoning, um, onto the attorney's report. Mr. Schuster.
The committee, uh, has looked at the, uh, idea of a policy for care and management, including pruning, trimming, or cutting of trees, shrubs, and other vegetation along rights-of-way in the village. And after, uh, consulting Mr. Hardy and Mr. Thorn, you have before you a resolution which will set that policy. You are acting together as the tree advisory board of the village that was previously established, I think as part of the Tree City USA program, to consider, uh, these measures, the key points, there's really only two, that, uh, within four feet of the edge of pavement of village roadways, uh, there should be a minimum, uh, canopy of fourteen feet and six inches, uh, to allow for safe passage of vehicles, especially, uh, school buses and, um, firefighting equipment. Committee is recommending that owners of property abutting the roadway be given a notice in fourteen days to comply, after which the village would undertake the work. So there are some areas that would need to be cut back or, uh, low-hanging tree limbs would need to be pruned. So that's for your consideration tonight, and I'm sure that Mr. Thorn and Mr. Hardy can add in, uh, their considerations in proposing this particular policy.
Um, yeah, I mean, if I may, it, uh, the idea behind this was to deal only with the, uh, the, uh, terming vegetation around the, the rights-of-way. Uh, not any of the other parts of the tree ordinances, so, uh, situations where there's nuisance trees or something has to come down and there needs to be something that replaces it, that is all still there, we didn't touch anything there, right? And so, this is only to deal with, uh, the two issues that we really can't let go, and that's, that's public safety and liability. There's just, there's just no way that we can, uh, uh, not deal with this and, 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 uh, expect a, a good outcome. Uh, Ed, what do you think?
Yeah, Mark, uh, summarized it well, the, the impetus for doing this was some concrete information in writing regarding possible liability should vehicles be damaged. And that's what got this started. And, um, give a little more direction to Public Works. I think the way it's written, um, I appreciate how Attorney Schuster, uh, worked on this. I think it clearly states, um, how the village feels. Or should feel.
No further comments or anything, we have a motion to approve resolution five forty-three. Establishing a policy for care and maintenance of trees.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Hoffman to approve resolution five forty-three. Resolution establishing a policy for the care and management, including pruning, trimming, and cutting of trees, shrubs, bushes, plants, and any other vegetation that's in the right-of-ways of the village roadways. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, resolution five forty-three passes.
Secondly, uh, and I, I don't see it in the, my meeting pack, the revised meeting package of three seven. There is an ordinance that would amend the, uh, tree care and management regulations in the village, I saw everybody has seen that.
Yep.
Uh, in those regulations that are, you know, were adopted, I don't know, ten or fifteen years ago now, there's a, uh, identification of a minimum tree canopy of eight feet, uh, which doesn't match up with the policy now adopted and doesn't, uh, probably doesn't make good sense over a roadway. So, uh, what's proposed is that the, uh, policy just adopted at fourteen feet, six inches, be added to the existing tree care and management regulations as regarding the, uh, roadways. And, uh, eight feet clear space would apply over any sidewalk or other pedestrian pathway in the village. That would be sufficient, uh, head height, uh, if you're walking or biking, um, for those purposes. So that's the proposal to modify the tree care regulations to comply with the policy that's just been adopted.
Yeah, motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash three.
So move Deatley.
Second, Hardy.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Hardy to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash three. Uh, what was the title of this one? An ordinance establishing, nope.
Amending the regulations concerning tree care and management in the village.
Right. And obviously we're changing ordinance number off this next, yes, okay. Uh, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash three and ordinance amending the regulations concerning tree care and management in the village. There be no further comments, questions, or discussion?
I just have a question. So, so it says eight feet along pedestrian walkway, because we only walk in the streets of the village, does that so?
Those aren't pedestrian walkways, those are streets.
So, if, if anybody's walking through the neighborhood on the street and, uh, I'll use the term a parkway tree or, or a tree that might be over, there's no, um, there's no ordinance preventing that from, 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 uh, being less than eight feet?
Any tree that's over a roadway and within four feet of the roadway, no, I'm sorry, at the edge of pavement of a roadway has to be fourteen feet, six inches.
Okay, so, so any, any street, any street in the village, if a tree is
extending over the
standing over the road.
Fourteen point sixteen.
Have to be fourteen foot, six inches.
Yep.
I know I have one in my own house that I trim back occasionally and it's definitely not fourteen foot, six inches high.
That's part of what this is about.
Right, so where would the, uh, pedestrian walkway part of it come into play?
There's a sidewalk in front of, uh, Dunkin' Donuts on seventy-two.
What about these trails here that people walk?
Trail here.
Trails, another one.
But this
Any walkways at the school? At school property?
Probably not, not many places, right?
There should be eight foot of that.
So, so the, so potentially are we saying that the, the Major Andre Trail that goes down to the bridge, any, any tree that is shorter than any branch that's shorter than eight feet has to be cut back?
Should be cut back. If it, yeah, if it hangs over the walkway.
And, and, uh, Public Works is gonna be doing that?
Well, to be honest, uh, the township will be doing that because we sold the, uh, wetland to them a couple of years ago. So basically, the only part of the trail we have is from here, right down to, uh, the edge of the wetland property.
Right, which
So, I mean, I, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
But the rest of it would be the township's responsibility.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of walkways in the village.
Right, so.
Pedestrian designated walkway.
Right, and, and this trail would be classified as that. Right, so.
It's a walking hiking trail.
Right, so, I, uh, my own, my only follow-up question is that we're taking away something on a pedestrian walkway that in our case is a trail through, through the woods to maintain safety for somebody walking by, it doesn't whack their head.
Or, or emergency vehicles to get through. You know, heaven forbid they have to get an ambulance back there, you want to make it from that they get ambulance or police car or other emergency vehicles back there.
Uh, well, I, I would raise the question, is it even wide enough or something like that, Joe?
Uh, yeah, that was part of the, uh, contract we put in.
Yeah, we got gators going in there.
There's two, uh, two gators.
We have two, yeah.
Yeah, so that's probably what is more likely
Right.
emergency vehicle for that particular, uh, event. And then it's squad car.
I'd drive a squad car down the, down the path.
Get to the bridge, you have a real problem.
Just gotta go really fast.
It's those two nineties behind us, headless horsemen, get you. Remember that tanker that got tied up in the Suez? Let the squad car locked up in the trail. Okay, no further comments, questions, discussion, roll call then, please. Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, one negative votes in motion, so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Schuster. Uh, engineers report. Mr. Steele.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I think in the past is, uh, we've requested that we start up the street program earlier this year. Um, basically, the reason for that is, in the past, is we've come very close to, uh, terrible weather, snow, and occasionally we've actually gotten delayed because of that. Um, so basically, is this year, uh, we're just requesting if we could get a more concrete budget item on that, just so we know what kind of funds that we're working with. That way, we can get everything submitted to iDOT and contract bids out a little bit earlier this year. It's more just, uh, requests from us. Any questions?
We have your list of, by tomorrow?
Budget-wise?
Well, seriously, uh, Kyle, we could have something before the next meeting, couldn't we?
Uh, yeah, we could, um, I mean, it's got, I'm not sure what we're looking at, MFT fund-wise this year.
It doesn't need to be that soon, we're just thinking like midsummer rather than, you know, October, you know? So.
Oh, yeah, if we don't start moving though now, if you wait till June or July, you still
Yeah. Yeah, just to give you an idea, at least as far as how long that it takes iDOT to review things. Um, it probably takes us a couple of weeks in order to create all the documents and everything, get everything measured up. Then it takes about a month for iDOT to actually review everything and get all the bid documents set. And then, uh, bid-wise, it's about another two weeks. So it takes about two months from the start of it to the end of it.
Well, the way we move, let's say, four months. Uh, we want to do something before September, that means we need to start moving the next couple of weeks. So personally, I'd like to see you with a list by the first of, uh, May, or first of April.
Yeah, I mean, I have pretty good lists as far as what we can do or what we want to do is, it just depends on what the budget's gonna end up being.
Well, budget-wise, uh, we know we've got about a hundred and forty thousand in MFT at this point, and that grows let's say eight or nine thousand a month. Uh, so we have five months from now, we're gonna have close to two hundred thousand just in MFT. Uh, we don't know at this point what we're going to throw from general fund into the, uh, mix. But this past year, we've transferred a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and I would expect we could transfer another hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh, from general fund to various projects. So we could do another hundred and fifty to roads, we could have almost three hundred and fifty thousand.
So there's also in regards to that is, did we want to use that rebuild Illinois money? Because I think the last payment that we get from that is coming up here soon, and then we have to use it by, uh, twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-three, I think it is, is when we actually end up having to use that, so.
And that's another two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and twenty?
Yeah, it's
One forty-five now, but we get an additional seventy.
Two hundred and seventeen thousand.
Will be a total amount. Plus a hundred and forty.
We've got a hundred and forty-two in there right now, but I don't know exactly what the whole back is on the other two projects. So.
The other two projects.
The Sleepy Hollow Road.
Oh. And, uh, how much are we holding back on the Sleepy Hollow Road project? Jeff?
Well, from when it originally, uh, shoot, I did not bring that. Um, from when I originally had done all that is, uh, depending on how we were gonna pay for the engineering, because right now we have it going through, uh, just general funds, I think it was, it was, is, we could move that into MFT. If we moved it into MFT, as we had about thirty thousand dollars left in regards to that after the street program, everything. Uh, however, that was at the end of last year, uh, when was that, October or whatever? So if you're saying that it grows like nine thousand every year or every month, then, I mean, we could be upwards, hundred and some thousand right now.
Tell you what, in the next couple of weeks, let you and I and Kyle and Eugene take a look at some of these funds and get an idea of what we're gonna have on budget time. Because first of May, we got a new budget.
Yep.
So, you know, it's not like we're gonna be spending any money in the next six weeks. But we need to get, uh, I would like to see you first of April, first of May, getting this pro- this process going. I, the longer we wait, I think the cost of asphalt's gonna go up. I mean, what's the price of oil today, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twelve dollars? I mean, twenty, a hundred and nineteen, thirty, a hundred and thirty, right to a hundred and thirty?
Six bucks, like, in three weeks.
I don't know, we might not get much done, I don't know what the cost of asphalt's gonna be like.
I will, I will say too, uh, Jeff and I will put a list together of stuff, but if any of the trustees, um, can think of any spots that they want to see addressed that we maybe missed or something, feel free to shoot me an email before, uh, we submit the list to the board. That way, we have everything covered and, you know, if we can get to it money-wise, then we'll get to it.
Alright, so let's, let's make it an issue, uh, by March twenty-first. And have, uh, something ready to, you know, start the ball rolling. Does that be first of April before you get anything going in?
Right.
Okay, oh, anything else, Jeff?
That is it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? When it's Public Works, just, uh, and this just pertains to, this is water, so I don't know if Kyle would answer this or who, but did anything change in the village with, uh, water pressure lately?
Yes.
It did?
Yes, we had a, uh, main break, uh, but it was west side.
Wow, I mean, we've noticed a significant drop in pressure in the last two weeks. I mean
I'll have to take a look, I, I haven't had, heard anything from people calling in or anything, but I can drive around, see if there's anything leaking.
It's just that, I, I mean, I noticed that I, I also cleaned the salt out of the garage on Saturday. I, I just gave it up to, okay, whatever. And, uh, because my wife had asked me about it, she says, there's never been a, like, a drop in pressure or something. I don't know, and that was about two weeks ago. But when I went out to the garage and I hooked up the hose and all that, I mean, world of difference between what it used to be and what it is now. But I did look around, I didn't see any water or anything like that, except for that one area. I don't know, you ever, anybody ever looked over there?
Uh, Kyle did, last spring.
Didn't find anything?
Well, the water line is on the other side of the road.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's gotta be a spring or something on that side.
You have a water softener?
No.
Okay.
So is it pressure or is it, is it flow? Because we've had a significant, I mean, we're at the So is it pressure or is it, is it flow? Because we've had a significant, I mean, we're at the very minimum of flow down here, we've had some issues with valves and otherwise it breaks and so. So I have high pressure and low flow down here, I think that's kind of what the fire department said too, right, Kyle?
Yeah, you're, well, you're in the special section, there's all sorts of. Yeah.
We're afraid to touch any valves because we could just ruin things worse, so.
Right.
Maybe nothing, but I mean, there's just a, I mean, we have water, it's flowing, but there's just definitely a difference in pressure and flow.
Okay.
Few weeks, we did have a major break there on the east, on the west side, but that shouldn't have affected you on the east side.
I mean, we got water, there's nothing wrong with it, but I I just wondered if there was anything that went on that affected it.
Not that I'm aware of, I'll uh, I'll check the east side and see if there, you know, look for water coming out of the ground.
Okay.
I'll get up, uh, back to the agenda then, nothing else for the engineer, uh, finance.
Warrants for the accounts payable in the amount of eighty-seven thousand zero forty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. I need a motion.
So move.
Moved by Thor, seconded by Deatley to approve the warrants of March seventh, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of eighty-seven thousand forty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Any additions, revisions, comments or questions? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Nibbick.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattly.
Aye.
Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion, so passes.
Sergeant Wilson would like to carry over one week of her vacation to the first week of May.
Motion so approved.
Uh, motion Deatley, just to allow Sergeant Wilson to carry over one week of her vacation to May of twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Thorn to authorize the sergeant to carry over a week of vacation into fiscal year twenty-two. Any further comments, questions or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Mr. Dattly.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Nibbick.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion, so passes. Uh, next item. Comments from the public, do you have anybody sign up? Alright, uh, moving on from comments to trustee, of course, roads and parks, Mr. Hardy.
Nothing new to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, finance.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, George. Water and sewer, Mr. Nibbick.
Oh, yes, I have something. I'll try to keep it as short as possible, so. As part of the water main improvements, uh, and maybe I should go to the bank history, we had a water main break at Sleepy Hollow School a few years ago. Uh, Kyle turned off some valves and we started getting complaints that people in Walnut Drive had no water and that should not have happened. Uh, also, we had the fire department when they were doing their. Flow testing and pressure testing had some issues with the fire hydrant in Walnut Drive and advised Kyle. Um, Kyle had hired, Walnut Drive is supposed to be looped to Carroll Crest by an old map that. Was in the village records. Kyle had hired water services and they went out that they could find no valves. And told Kyle that there's absolutely no water main from Walnut to Carroll Crest, my place else is a dead end. So the village engineer had recommended that that is a, due to water quality and. Uh, flow issues that we should loop that main. Uh, and so as part of our water main project, he was hoping to get. Find out if there was interest for the people on Walnut and toward Acorn, because Acorn is also a. Dead end water main that should be looped to see if we could get some easements, which we don't have in that area. So, um. Our village clerk, Tony, was kind enough to dig through the past time, went through this exercise, find a packet information. We took the letter that we had sent to those residents and kind of made some changes to it. Jeff Steele made some suggested changing. And then Eugene went and finished the thing up and got the draft letter that you see in your packet. Um, there was some talk about whether we should put the initial offering, the people. Uh, that on, that we gave it to last time off of Laurel, we offered two thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, for them giving up the easement on their property. Decision was made, I think, between all of us that we'll just put nothing in there now and. Wait and see what the response is, but as Jeff Steele would like to get this going, so he can see if. Doesn't want to waste time and energy and money planning for a water main between Walnut, Acorn, let's see, get some easements in there, so. I would like to make a movement that we approve the draft letter and authorize Eugene to send it out to those residents and get the process rolling.
Okay, we have a motion to so approve the draft of the letter in the packet to send to these, is it four?
Uh, four resident.
Second, Hardy.
He made the motion. Oh, that was, okay, I I've missed chosen, okay. Motion by Nibbick, seconded by Hardy to approve the uh draft letter concerning the easement for the extension of. Loop of the water main. Any other comments, questions or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Mr. Dattly.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nibbick.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion, so passes.
That is all.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, police and public safety, Mr. Deatley.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of quick things here, um. We need to, uh, I need to make a motion to get the approval uh for our purchase order for our new squad car. This was approved in our last budget. Uh, we're trying to get this going because of supply chain issues. And knowing that Ford shuts down their certain assembly plants at certain times, so we're trying to get this approved. So we can go ahead and get this uh in the works. So I make a motion, we approve the purchase order of our new squad car in the uh upcoming budget year. And allow the chief to go ahead and proceed with that process.
Second, the amount is. Forty-five thousand?
Give me the purchase of the squad car with um registration, uh, it should be an amount, I'd have seen forty-three seven, forty-three thousand seven hundred dollars.
The motion is to authorize the chief to place a purchase order for a new squad. Prior to the budget of fiscal year twenty-three being approved. However, we did have this on the budget last year, it was postponed a year. So, uh, we know it's gonna be back on the budget for this year and we're gonna need it. Uh, what we're doing now is allowing him to put the order for this car in before we get the budget approved in order that we may. Hopefully have a car before.
Are they currently estimating when cars will be available?
The, when I talked to the dealer, we're gonna go through a month ago, if we ordered it a month ago, it would have been first week in June. Uh, that was before they did the blockade in Canada. So I'm guessing we won't have the car, if I get the order in this week, I'm guessing. Probably sometime in July, that that would be my guess.
You don't want to wait till July to order. I'll order them now, so. Okay, no further comments, questions, uh? We need a second, we need a.
I seconded it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we seconded Thorn's second. Moved in the second. Any further comments or questions, question, if not, roll call please. Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nibbick.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattly.
Aye.
Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Six firmly votes and no negative votes in motion, so passes. Okay.
Thank you all. One other quick thing, just uh shout out to Kyle and Dylan. I did have a resident call and say, thank you so much for the village for being on top of the potholes. So they had noticed that potholes had already been fixed. Um, so just a thank you uh out to Kyle and Dylan on that.
Thank you. Uh, we're not done, there'll be more.
Oh, I know, that's what I said, it's just the first round. But uh, they were very appreciative that uh they were already being fixed, they were, they were impressed by that, so.
Thank you very much.
And that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Uh, building and environment, Mr. Thor.
Uh, no report.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, building and zoning, Mr. Prado.
I had an email from uh somebody inquiring about. The one oh, uh, one thousand one Main Street, uh, the old Maxway Motors building. I forward it to you also, Mr. President, and uh. The only question I had is, is who, I know when, when uh. Max went in there, I believe he purchased the physical structure of the building. Who owned the building in the past?
Never owned by Sears. They had a.
That real estate guy.
There was some guy in Rockford.
Yeah.
And he sold it to a guy in La Grange, and I want to say the guy in La Grange's name was like Robert Marshall or something.
Well, I think, I think uh the former Cardbeau.
Somebody.
Yeah, that was actually in some dispute. Because Max was trying to deal with the building as if he were the owner and if he was not. So I know I heard from an attorney who said, wait a minute, just so you know, he doesn't own it. But I don't recall, I can look up, we can tell, but I I don't have it at the top of my head. Uh, who is the present owner?
This uh inquiry is also something that would have to go be, be, uh, before planning and zoning. Because the uh inquiry has to do with uh the zoning would have to change for that location. Uh, so I don't know where it'll go, but just let you know, the email just came through the other day. And uh. The reason I, I thought about who owned it or or what it is. I don't know if any of you have heard, but the uh, the old Chili's on, on uh. There in Westundy is uh scheduled to become a, an assembly, the hamburger place that's up in Barrington. And and I thought to myself, boy, if we could just level the, the old Maxway building and. Put, put a uh portillo there, it'd be awesome.
Oh, my God.
So, anyway, that's all.
Yeah, we got those eight hundred thousand units across.
I know, I know. I know. Lot of hungry people.
Yeah.
And that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, well, I did uh make a return phone call on that, I'd get to hear back from those individuals.
That's my, I just wanted to make sure we passed it along.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Uh, okay, any old business come before the board? Old business come before the board, we'll move to new business. New business, coordinates twenty twenty-two dash four. Establishing a temporary sixty-day vehicle weight limit on all vehicles traveling within the village. Historically, as the weather breaks, we pass this ordinance. And uh, we put the signs up on uh Sleepy Hollow Road and uh Locust and Willow and Joy. So, uh, this has a sixty-day limit. Do we want to enact it now, Jeff, or do we want to give it a couple of weeks?
Um, I don't know what the weather is supposed to be like here.
Lolly coaster?
Almost forties all week.
That's, yeah, I mean, typically is we've either done it this meeting or the middle of the month. Um. I don't, either way, I think it's fine, just given how the temperature's looking of. The uh, if anybody else has preference on it.
So we enacted it today, the March eighth, so it'll go till basically May seventh or eighth. Sixty days?
Yeah.
Think we're okay with that?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay. Alright, do we have a motion to so approve?
So move Deatley.
Second.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Hoffman to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash four. Establishing a temporary sixty-day weight limit on vehicles within the village. Any further comments, questions or discussion? Yes, what would be the start date again? Tomorrow, okay. Okay, that's what, that's what I'm gonna do, yes. Right, okay. Okay, no further comments, questions or discussion, roll call please. Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Mr. Dattly.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Nibbick.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Six firmly votes and no negative votes in motion, so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, the next item, uh, you have received a map of the zoning of the village of Sleepy Hollow. Uh, reason for that is that last year we disconnected. The Randy's Market section from our map. And state statutes say that every March, if you've had a change to your zoning map, you need to republish. So what we've got in front of us is what Jeff and I and Tony know as the official. Map of the village of Sleepy Hollow at this point with Randy's being disconnected. If anybody sees anything that we've missed, please let us know promptly.
Did, uh. I was gonna say, Joe had uh noticed that uh the map included in there, include in all the water mains, basically everything was turned on. Did Tony have you?
No.
Tony happen to forward uh the new one out?
Yes, he did that this afternoon.
Okay, okay, good.
Yeah, what we had, Joe, what you saw was just the original copy. With everything on it, he just dropped off Randy's Market to show Tony and I.
Yeah, no, I I had just commented that, that the water main that doesn't exist was still on there, I just said, can you take that off when he has a chance? That was, that was the one comment I had.
That's a different map, that's not the zoning map.
Well, it's on the same, isn't it on the same thing, Jeff?
Yeah, it's the same thing, yeah. The uh zones on there.
And I know that Miss, on a similar day, I know Mr. Schuster and the chief had a discussion about the boundaries. Relating to that disconnection of Randy's and Randall Road or where the boundaries between Elgin and Sleepy Hollow, that ever get resolved? And is that map that Jeff presented correct?
It got resolved by, it's an informal agreement at this point between the two chiefs of police. Uh, I, I'll look at that map uh and see what it shows about the actual physical boundary of the village.
From everything that I've seen is, it both, it shows it as being. Uh, at least on the south side is, it shows it as being in the center of Randall Road. Um, that includes sub, basically on every single map, G I S, uh, Platte's Subdivision, it shows it there. Uh, once you start getting north is, it shows it being in the middle of the road, however, is. It's also been dedicated towards uh the county in regards to road purposes. So that's kind of why you see it basically on the east side of Randall Road. And then on the south side is, it goes to the center line of the road. However, it's kind of shown every single which way on every single map possible.
Yeah.
So it's got to take your choice.
It would be nice, we had one thing that, that at least you could look at, or we could say, this is the correct one, so I don't mark, and Jeff, you want to get together and just. Cause I'm looking at the map behind you, Steve, and that obviously is wrong, because I can see Randy still as part of the village.
So that needs. That's why, uh, that's why we have to change it.
Right, but it'd be nice if we had one that we could say, no, these are the, these are the boundaries we all agree to, so I don't know. I don't even know what, as Jeff said, I don't know which ones are correct, because everybody has something different. Yeah.
Well, right now, we're just dealing with the removal of uh Randy's Market from the map, so all the maps will have to be redone.
Right, but as I said, that was one of the issues that we came up, I think we'd ask Mark when that was, we disconnected, and he said that the state wasn't really clear on that, so it just kind of tied into that. Whole discussion.
But for a zoning map, you're okay, you're not zoning the middle of the road in any event, but.
Yeah.
So, to that extent, it could be approved tonight to show the current zoning of property within the village.
What, was there also something where uh a portion of the former Randy's? Where the, I think where the cell tower is, is still, or was never?
No.
No. Okay.
I think that's been clarified, all of it was disconnected.
Okay, thank you. From our standpoint, we wanted to clarify a jurisdictional issue, if there was a crash on Randall Road, or if there was crime that was committed on Randall Road, we needed to know who was gonna handle it.
Right.
Um, so between Chief Well and and myself, we just agreed that we'll take everything. So between Chief Lally and myself, we just agreed that we'll take everything that's basically north of the tollway where we start. Up to just north of, of Joey there. And we're gonna take Randall Road and handle it, so, on both sides. On both sides. Otherwise, you have people out there pointing the tires at yours, it's just, we don't want to put our officers in that position.
Okay, any other questions on the zoning map changes as presented? If not, a motion to approve the zoning map as presented?
I move to present, to approve the zoning map, map as presented. That identifies the boundaries of the city of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
Second, moved by Prano, seconded by Thorn to approve the zoning map as presented by the village engineer for approval. Any other comments, questions or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Nivik.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thor. Six affirmative votes and no negative votes, the motion so passes. Okay, any other new business come before the board? Next item.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Thor, roll call please. Mr. Nivik.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, we are adjourned, we will see you seven thirty on the twenty-first. Like it or not.
Good night, gentlemen.
Good night.
It's crazy.